Welcome, everyone. It's ten o'clock. Of the public health and human services committee meeting. And our first order of business is to set the date twenty nine, twenty twenty four. Sam, second Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post motion pass. And next we have our department request and reports, shelter services, Timmy.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Couple of things to provide you with updates on. I did previously share that the department had an go some strategic planning, taking a look at what our mission has been, our values, vision, that sort of thing. And update it had been a few years since we had, and during the pandemic, so many shifts happened in our guidance around our programs. It really felt for honestly myself, as well as our staff, that there was a disconnect between what our mission was, which was to support self sufficiency and our reality, which was to provide as much as you could for everybody within the guidelines of our program. So we certainly value self sufficiency. That hasn't changed. But we did find that we needed to make some updates. So I'd like to share with you, and I have, I'm not a very good, this may come as a surprise, I'm not a very good listener. So for me, I need to see things and read them a few times. So I did print out, make a couple of prints here. But I don't have a whole ton of them. Just what we did come up with. So our mission for both the social services and the aging and disabilities resource center, which consists also almost to the aging, is to work together to assist our residents by reducing poverty, abuse, and neglect while promoting safety and self sufficiency through quality services. So we're promoting it now. We can't make them do it. Our vision, in the past, we had and I, we didn't exactly have a vision separated out. We had goals, and so we felt that a vision would be more appropriate. And so our vision, which is essentially if you meet it, you put yourself out of business, is to be recognized as a leader and partner by inspiring our residents to overcome barriers to reach their greatest potential. We will evolve as an agency to meet essential needs in our community. So the actual process of working together with a, with a small group went incredibly more fluidly than I thought it would. I was concerned. This has really never been my specialty to work with strategic planning, and I actually led this work group. And it was a work group that consisted of volunteers, and from the volunteers I selected to represent all of our divisions, as well as our different levels within the organizational structure. And we were able to meet a handful of times and come up with something that we all felt good about. We pushed it out to the rest of our department, got their feedback, made some adjustments, and this is what we have settled with for our day. So I wanted to share that with you.
I applaud you on the way to strategically. It's very important.
Thank you. I had initially thought I would have a facilitator to assist us with that, and, and then that didn't come to pass. So that's why I decided that I would take it on myself. So I also want to share with you. I'm sorry.
Just real quick, the, the shift from promoting self sufficiency to giving as much as we can, is that a state directive?
It's been in, in response, yes, that our, our programs, particularly during the pandemic, and they, a lot of those what were temporary shifts have become more indoctrinated, whatever, part, part of the regulation now. It makes it very, very difficult for us to hold people truly accountable to the point that we can sanction them and no longer provide them services. The, the thought, I'm sure, at somebody's level is that the more you work with them, the more you support them, the more success they will achieve. And there's a great concern about just leaving people without any services, because then what will, what will then happen in our community? We are trying to adapt ourselves in the services that we provide, the additional things that we, we are using our discretion to provide, like the services with homeless people. We have dedicated workers to meet with them, find out what, what are their barriers, help them with the interview process when they're talking to a landlord, you know, those different things. We can't, there's no, I guess it's sort of the carrot at that point, but it's not, it's not something that it's something that we are offering. It is not something that we can take away from them, I guess, in that way.
But this seems like that, that attitude or whatever is, is taking away a system that's supposed to be the leg up and turning it into a modern lifestyle. So.
And that was a lot of our, our dissatisfaction with it as well. Yeah. And that's, we, you know, our office consists of folks from all different levels and educational background, and it just generally, for all of us, didn't sit well with how we were being regulated by the state. So what we're trying to do is to look at the community and really try to really work with people and engage with them and push them more in that manner. But I know what you, I know what you're saying.
I applaud you. Thank you.
This is a program that also, I think we became acquainted with it during the pandemic. There, I did make enough of these so that you can each take them back to your offices and post them. Some more. But it is, it started, thank you, as an extension of like the meal. The lunch, school lunch meal program. In recognizing that during, when school was not in operation, that code would be, you guys can have extra copies of these to post them in your community also. Recognizing that kids would not be provided with a cooked meal as they would be during a school day, whether that was because the school was closed down due to the pandemic or whether it was because the school was closed down due to the summer. So people that were in receipt of SNAP, the supplemental nutrition benefits, were given extra funding based on the number of children that they had that were school age through the summer, and that is continuing again this year. And in fact, I believe that it became a change, a federal change across the board to provide this. So this is new information that's going out. Letters will be going out in the mail directly from the state to the people that are eligible for that and telling them, the, the people that they are aware of, and telling them what they need to do and what, what the benefit will be. It is supposed to be a benefit of a hundred and twenty dollars per child for the summer. And it will be something that will be available to them and added on to their electronic benefit card. It is, though it is extra cash, essentially, they are still required to spend that fund, funding in the same way that they are in regular two stamp benefits, where it should be something that's obviously food and food that they need to prepare. So if there are other people in the community that don't hear about this or haven't gotten any information in the period of time that they think that they should, there is the code on here that they can scan. This is something I would encourage you to put on your websites as well. And then just a couple of other miscellaneous things. We are getting funding information trickling in after the budget has been finalized. Our foster care block grant allocation was released on June seventeenth. The amount of that has decreased by five percent from last year. That was a capped decrease. The state had said that there would not be decreases less than five percent. And they refer to the decrease as continuing to align the state and local funding with the historical intent of a foster care block grant, which the historical intent of the foster care block grant is to promote a reduction in use of foster care placements. The state believes that if they give us less money, we'll do less placements. We don't do placements because we get money. We do, we do placements for safety. And we certainly have been reducing the number of placements historically. I've mentioned in the past that when I was foster care supervisor, became foster care supervisor, we had about a hundred children in foster care in Washington County. At this point, we've got about forty. It varies between thirty five and forty five. So the, the laws, the work that we do have all followed the historical intent regardless of what the funding is. This is really just another way of acknowledging that funding gets passed on to the locals. So the total amount of that decrease was fifty two thousand dollars. At the same time, the supervision and treatment for juveniles program, we call that SDSJP, funding was also released this month. And we got an increase in that amount. That doesn't quite make up for the total amount. But what we got this year was seventy four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, and what we had last year was forty one thousand. So that has increased. That is what the state caps, what they will provide for a drawdown. They match our, I, I struggle with this. When we spend a dollar, they give us sixty two cents. So this is their sixty two cents. So it, it definitely has a much larger effect. And that is what we utilize for funding largely. All of it goes to fund services that are provided through Somaire's department. We have talked about that here in the past. There have also been times in the past where beyond the planning that we can do with the regular allocation and transferring some of the money that is provided through detention services to SDSJP to increase the amount of preventive services we provide here to keep kids out of the juvenile justice program. We are also given opportunities to request one-time funding, and that generally happens when statewide basis, other counties are not spending all of their funds. So we've also been notified that there is an opportunity to request additional one-time funding from the money that was not fully spent last year. So Sue and I have gone back and forth on, is there something that we need? And then if there is, that would, you would need to understand as a county that the advantage to us by asking for this funding is that if it's something that is needed and would likely be purchased anyway through the youth barrel, this is a way for us to recapture sixty two percent of that from the state. So I'm not sure if you have, if you're on the, going to be adding on to the agenda afterwards to speak about anything? Or if you would like to hear if Sue has something to say now?
Sure. I can do it either way.
You can say it out.
Okay. I just wanted to say that traditionally, the one-time funds, which was a couple of years ago when we actually had additional funds, and we used it in that time to use it for support services for the programs that already, that we already have. So we were able to purchase like additional workbooks, incentives, anything that supports the positive youth development program that we already do and those that are funded through SDSJP. We've heard of some games that we use at events, which both, we have employment kids that actually work the events, and then we have the event that provides the game play or fun activities for the kids within the community. So it's kind of a dual purpose. And that's what we would, if we, there was additional funds, then we have no idea how much those funds would be. But we do have a list of support items that, that we could use that, that we would need to purchase anyway, like the journals that we use for the juvenile day restoration use of the students and use that are funded through SDSJP. So that kind of clarified. The additional funds this year through the plan are specifically targeted to a grouping of kids that are like kids that have stolen a car or have runaways or things like that. So we have a show of capacity that we're willing to serve those specific types of youth, which we already do serve those youths. So we have the capacity to serve them. So thus, we'd be eligible for the additional funding.
So we would, I would just be looking for your acknowledgement that it's okay to submit a request for additional funds that needs to be done early in July, say that yes, if they become eligible, we would like more. And then we would ballpark what it is that we think we would like. So.
And depending on the dollar amount, you wouldn't know what the dollar amount is.
Speaking of that, is there a bit of a gavel doing this? You gotta lay the money out first, and we don't know how much money is seen out?
No, we would only.
We would only purchase if we received.
Yeah, which we, we're gonna need them anyway. And, and so we get funding for these services every year. We, we just received the notice of what the funding will be for this coming year, and we need to write our plan for that. So typically, we would be writing in the plan that provides these same services, and we would be taking from that perspective, funding money to make these purchases. We need them anyway. So this is a way to preserve what we can, you know, provide next year and then grab some other money. Yeah.
So Timmy, and so I just want to emphasize what I heard each of you say. These are things we'd be purchasing anyway. So that is a, that savings to me. It's not additional purchases that, oh, now we got this.
Right. Yeah.
Thanks.
So you're looking for a motion to.
I would like. I'll, I'll make support for that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's, it's very gray how that fits in with anything like grant-like or whatever. So I just wanted to bring it to you for explanation and your support.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, it's so, and this is being kind of picky, and I know it's not you, because it's a state former. But if I was to read this word's face value, it says most children will be automatically eligible for summer EBT and do not need to do anything to enroll. But the emphasis on if a child didn't work, okay? However, some children may need to apply. And there's an inline application. So if I have a ten, twelve, eleven-year-old kid come in my office and he's reading this, it's hot. This is not going to go online to apply for this.
Yeah, and I.
You lose him.
And I don't know, the kid, in some cases, the kids might be more able to do it.
Exactly. I understand.
You know, I know that you do that just, just from the technology capacity. But it, it does, the guidance that came, that I received refers to the youth getting the card. It doesn't make any sense to me either.
It says here too.
And it's, it's federal guidance that came to the state, and this is how they packaged it. And so again, this is not something administered through our office. If we get calls on it, we will try to, you know, assist people and circle them back around through to the state. But yeah, you're, you're right.
Because it does say here eligible children will receive summer EBT food benefits on a EBT card indication. Students could, this child.
I don't know if the language was intended to that the kids would have influence over their parents or to get parents to understand they should be buying food that the children like. I, I don't.
When they get reduced lunch and they go through the cafeteria and they show the card?
No, that, there's already, right at the beginning of the school year, yeah, there's paperwork that, that gets completed. And for the youth that are on cases that already received the SNAP benefits, they just need to show proof to the school that they received the SNAP benefits, and then that, that passes through for them.
Yeah, I mean, just to add up, there's a child nutrition portion for the summer. Public Health has been given a list of school districts in the county that will have either meal sites or home delivered breakfasts and lunches for the summer. For some reason, they've asked us not to publish it, but we have it available. I sent you a copy. I believe the school districts are responsible for notifying their population that this is available. And I believe, like, for example, Hartford School District is doing home delivered meals and it can be provided to children in the district. They don't have to be qualifying under EBT or SNAP.
I, I, I found that to be the case in the past, where they do the planning, they let us know about the planning, and then the state does an announcement, PR type of.
Yes, you're right.
Go ahead, Jim.
As long as we come for circle back to this again, I scanned to our. And it says that people expect to start receiving the benefits mid-August through October, which means they kind of miss the summer lunch program anyway.
It's, it's government at its finest.
It is, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes, I did. I had a question. It's going to be for the, so the school districts that are providing meals. So let's say, I don't know, forty eight is, or is it?
Yeah, I want to say off the top of my head, Whitehall.
I, I haven't seen anything of any.
I'm just trying.
So are, are children from other communities that are in the district eligible to participate in any of those programs?
I do not believe so, because it, it's something that is specific for this.
Okay.
And some are on site, they have to be on site for meals, Salem, maybe. And some are delivering meals because of the. Formative community.
Thank you.
See, believing Greenwich, we're from one of that, they partner with some. And they deliver it in.
Yeah, I know there are some partnerships like Salem, pretty much, you know, there are some art programs as well.
And then there's backpack programs in some of the school districts too. I'm not sure how they necessarily, you know, keep that going.
So I have a question. This is miscellaneous, right?
Yep.
So I don't know whether it's for you or Public Health, maybe somewhere else. Whitehall's having a homeless problem right now.
The county's had a homeless problem.
The county as well. But I was wondering how we get people some help, like water and food? I know we used to have FEMA water and rations. I'd be willing to pick it up and deliver it if.
Yeah, I'm not aware of there being any rations. The, the regional food bank would be working with the food pantry that's in Whitehall to provide.
Because I don't know if anybody's helped. I mean, I, I do know if someone helped them, but that's like, it's something that's really.
Yeah, I, so I'm not sure where you're seeing these folks. They're, they're clearly people that come to the county and, and claim that they're homeless.
Lost their places to live within the last.
Okay, the, from the evictions, possibly. Okay, you're seeing them at tents.
Yeah.
They are able to come to our office.
Why it's not in the paper? It really baffles me.
I haven't, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
It's called internationally. That, that place isn't in the paper. I said, at home, I'm doing one account, I am like this.
Yeah, I, I know, I knew, and I, I brought it up to somebody's attention at the time. I can't remember what format, whether it was here or specifically to board members. But it was definitely something that General Rosell and I spoke about, the fact that there were these apartments that were going to be sold and evacuated. People that are, need the income requirement, eligibility requirement can come to us for services. And we have had some, we thankfully did not have all of them. People are also able to make their choices and, and stay in, in a tent. And at this time of year, that's not a safety issue.
Not living in a tent.
Falls. Yeah, it's true. Okay.
Thank you, Tim. And next we have Public Health. This team is away, so we have.
Good things for today. First item we have is the Durin transportation increase. Durin transports children for our preschool special education program. The contract states that each year the rates will be adjusted based on the current CPI index. The rate increase limit is two percent each year. This year, the public transportation, April twenty twenty four CPI was four and a half percent. For the contract, we would like to request a two percent increase to the Durin transportation rates effective September first twenty four. With the increase, we will remain with our transportation budget, within our transportation budget for the twenty twenty four year.
Saying including additional services or is it an increase over the board?
That's just a two percent increase.
So they have provided additional services for the loans. It's just, okay.
So where is the extra percent going to come from?
It's budgeted, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's budgeted?
Yeah.
I'm a little.
Yeah, well, we will remain within our budget.
Well, second Scott.
Do we need to move the finances that we're doing, or is it, is that what the motion, I don't know, I'm just asking. No, we can't do that here. Okay, so we're gonna go, all right.
The next item I have is a resolution request for the public health urgency preparedness grant. To later request to add twenty twenty four, twenty five public health preparedness grant to our twenty twenty four budget. The total amount of the grant is fifty two thousand ninety nine dollars. And the grant period is July first twenty four to June thirtieth twenty five.
So we've got this great.
Yeah. Yes, we just need to add the funds into our budget.
We have to move that one to finance?
So big a motion, move the finances?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post motion passes.
We also have a staffing pattern change request due to the ending of the New York State Public Health Corps Fellowship program cycle. We would like to request removal of the fellow positions from our staffing pattern. This will remove two graduate fellows and five fellows effective July first twenty four, as that funding stream is no longer there.
Oh, and affect your appropriations?
We have had two, one graduate fellow currently. The graduate fellow will be transitioning after July first to a public health specialist position that was approved in our budget for this year. And the other fellow, fellow is moving on to a position of.
So this, this, this is being eliminated, this is being done with. We don't anticipate it coming back. Three, four, one, it's done.
The, it will be a permanent removal to our staffing pattern change. The New York State Public Health Corps Fellowship is, has reiterated. Is has reiterated, redeveloped their program, which they're calling Fellowship two point O. In which there will be fellows available to be stationed in Washington County. But they will not be hired through the county, the state is hiring them through a outside contract. So we will be eligible for two fellows. Starting in August. That we are able to pick from a pool of people that apply.
So so that if we had these outside people that have to go staff the pattern, would it be now with somebody else?
They're not, they're not, no, no, they're they're all of their HR is handled outside, they're just stationed here to work in our. And that is that will be about a two year. Fellowship that we.
It's not. Uh any discussion, all those in favor?
Alright, um the next thing I have is related to incentives for our childhood lead poisoning prevention program. Each year we distribute Halloween bags to Head Start Invictus Lead Poisoning Prevention Education Materials. Um usually that coincides with National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in October. We would like to request to purchase incentive items um to add to the. No cost educational materials that we already use um.
That's already budgeted?
Yes.
And you're not looking to use the county logo?
Uh we are looking to put. Um. Well, because their their giveaways is usually the primary at two committee.
They must be looking to use the county logo, you don't need permission if it's budgeted.
Okay.
I think there is a possibility that I should give away this. Oh, I had stuff that you give them.
Yeah.
Most.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt.
So the the total cost of the items that we are proposing to purchase is about one thousand four hundred dollars. Um but it is budgeted.
So move this.
Um I do have a couple of program updates. Public Health purchased a chest freezer in August of two thousand two. For one hundred and eighty nine dollars, which has outlived its useful life and is no longer needed at Public Hope. Cornell Cooperative Extension would like to use this chest freezer at the fair in their four H food booth. We are requesting permission to donate the freezer to Cornell Cooperative and remove it from our fixed staff list.
Two years old.
Instead of paying to dispose of it.
I was gonna move the motion, Paul, Paul. Uh all those in favor?
Uh and the Tina wanted me to give an update on the H five N one avian flu update. Um as of right now, there have been no detected cases of avian flu in dairy cattle or humans in New York State. There has been guidance issued for New York State fairs and we'll be attending a meeting with. Fair personnel and public safety on July fifth to review the guidance. In the U S, there are twelve states with infected dairy cattle. Leave the number of herds is slightly above one hundred and fifty herds. Uh New York State Department of Health has been communicating with the health departments on. Who will be responsible for investigating and responding if there is a case within our county. So we do have several meetings a week with state and federal partners on that. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, good job, thank you. Uh okay, so we have an additional item. I had a team of gems at the.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have just one simple item today. The Service of Workforce Development Board recently passed their budget for uh the twenty twenty. Twenty four, twenty five year begins July first. But according to the uh tri-party agreements, once the board itself passes the budget, each county needs to also. Accept and pass the budget, so I'm bringing that to you. Um I did send the documentation ahead of time. Gretchen Statham with the Workforce Development Board, the uh executive director of the Workforce Development Board. She highlighted the things that were changes. And I'm happy to answer any questions you want to have about it, but um.
I've got one on the full time deputy director. So for twenty three, it was thirty seven, five hundred. Was she there the whole year in DMO?
She was not, she just started in May.
Okay, so that was a salary disclaimer at that point in time for the six months, months.
The salary was approved at this time last year for six months, but she was only there for. Uh maybe June of the year. So yeah, this is, I believe. Honestly, I had trouble with that number two, but that's that is not what she received for two months.
Okay, if she was, if this if that's your budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, if last year's budget was based on six months, thirty seven, five and thirty seven, five. Comes up to basically seventy one, two ninety two, we have it together, so that's a full year, so it's really got a. An increase, it's just.
No, it's not an increase, she just started. And that was that part was approved in last year's budget and there was discussion at that time about whether or not that would be a permanent. Of adding a deputy director. Historically, there hasn't been one there um and. Part of Gretchen's reasoning for this position was succession, perhaps someone else that knew the programs, knew. All of the regulations, all of that um. It is unclear whether or not. It's intended that that position will continue when Gretchen retires. And I don't, there's really no way to, no way to know that, they've already, they've already approved the position. Each county approved it last year and so for right now it exists and Gretchen hasn't announced a retirement date just within the next few years. So we'll just have to kind of keep watching that year after year.
So you look for a motion just to the. Supervisors or.
My, I wasn't sure. Okay, I would like the one one point, just so that I know everybody's aware, one big significant change I'd like to point out is in. The rent insurance line. Um and this is significant to us because what uh with the hire of this uh deputy director. They also needed more space, so instead of the one person office that. Um they occupied, they moved into a different office that's part of a suite, has access to a conference room, that that sort of thing. It seems reasonable, they call it does cost more, so that's obviously the increase there from thirty five hundred. A year to seventy eight hundred, the reason this is particularly. Um worth mentioning for us is that we at least paid that rent for her. From the money that we get, our our portion of the uh Workforce Development Board. Um budget, so we. We recently met with Gretchen and the finance person from from the uh from all three counties. And learned a little, I learned a little bit more, it's a very complicated system, but. So the um the the money comes to the state for workforce development. The state has allocation um. Uh you know, a way of of allocations, they have a formulas. That determine how it goes to each board. And then they're from that, at that point, each board has their own allocation formulas to determine how it is then dispersed. So the Saratoga Warren Washington Board determined the current formulas that are used to divide that money up between the counties. Um at this meeting recently, we. We actually challenged them, it's been a long, we were, the kind of language we were hearing was we inherited this and that sort of thing. So we said, this is. This is our Workforce Development Board that determines these formulas to begin with. And we was wants to stop us from re, you know, looking at this again, from taking another look at it. Um I think that's going to be a bigger discussion, it's a lot of work and um. We're the only ones who are really eager to do it, but but we are looking at that. That said, what typically happens is that those formulas are used, each portion, each county get a portion that they get. And then each county also pays a portion of this budget. And. What we have done in the past is that this, because the Workforce Development Board itself is not an entity, they can't enter into a lease agreement or a contract or anything. One of the uh one of the centers will do that for them. So we handle the lease agreement for their space. We pay that rent and then it's taken out of out of the portion that we have to pay for this budget. This year, that's not going to happen because Saratoga County is actually paying for this budget. We still need to all approve it each county, but Saratoga has extra funds in their allotment. Um excess funds and so they're paying for it, so this is this amount here. Um it just it comes directly out of what comes to Washington County. Just so you know that.
So the thirty three on address, is this the original address?
Yes, it's still the same building, it's a different.
So I guess the thing confuses me a little slow on this, I guess. Is it Saratoga is paying for it, where does it come out of Washington County's budget?
That's a, that's a interesting, it's a good question. Because we're the ones that actually enter into the space for them, because they can't do, the Workforce Development Board can't do it.
So they. So Saratoga's paying for it?
Saratoga's paying with the Workforce Development Budget overall, like instead of Saratoga paying. The when we get our disbursements, it usually a piece is taken out to go to the Workforce Development Board. Saratoga is just paying all of that, but this, even though it's in this budget, comes out of. LEAP's Workforce Development Board budget because we pay it ourselves. We, I I execute that that lease agreement with them.
And then LEAP is reimbursed based on the budget or?
We're not, we what the way of method that was used in the past for reimbursement was that. It was, that amount was taken out of our piece of the overall budget. And and now there's just, it's not, it's still a savings for us overall because we're not paying our portion of this budget. I just wanted to make sure you understand how this affects Washington County.
If I'm if I'm remembering right, looking at it right. Their budget's gone up to one hundred fifty nine thousand dollars in three years. That's a hundred fifty nine thousand dollars that the centers will not be able to spend because the allotment to our three counties is a fixed amount. So the more the Workforce Development Board gives, the less the centers get.
Yes, yes.
So they the centers have lost one hundred fifty nine thousand dollars in three years. And so they can't provide out.
Yes. And so what it, I also learned recently in that same meeting, a little bit more about how the other counties deal with that. Saratoga actually is, the Saratoga Workforce Development Center, the One Stop Center is completely de-ophoned, that they have no extra funding. The county doesn't give them anything um and they don't have anything else, so. It's a little baffling to me how they then have access. But they say they do. Um Warren County actually gets, they also, the Warren County One Stop has a hundred thousand dollars per year from the county government as well. And also has additional grants, ARPA funds, things like that that they've gone after, so we are working on the, is working on. Uh this is a piece of our fund development plan to um.
Your county definitely has some dislocated worker needs that are.
We do, we do.
With less funding.
Yeah. Fortunately, the dislocated worker funds are the ones that we have the hardest time spending, our adult and youth go very rapidly. And dislocated worker, we have a harder time spending, but from the quad closure, we had three people in Washington County. That were that were quad employees and we did work with them. But that was it, that that quad closure only affected Washington County, three Washington County folks.
That we don't.
That we know of, that's the information we had in quad, but we could only get limited, we couldn't get their names or addresses or anything, just how many there were.
What about that city?
I don't know the number from that city. Not sure, but we have been working with those that. That come to us, again, we can't go to them, we can just promote our services and try to make sure they know we're here. Because we we give them access to their names, but that's what we've done, is trying to be sure that. Uh each area knows that we're here and what we're doing. And we're also working on fundraising for that as well, so that we can do more for the future. So. Any other questions on the budget before we? We we just still have to, I know I probably raised more questions than we had, but I just want you to know, I'm just, it's just such a complicated. Thing and I just want to be sure that you know what you're looking at.
So we have to move this to the full board.
Good for me, thank you very much.
The other business.